Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September 12, 2020. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will a clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Nasser Beck.
Here.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Ohm.
Here.
Ms. Hulteen.
Present.
Ms. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Stites.
Here.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven council members present. We have a quorum. Hoppyhead to excuse herself.
Thank you. Members, without exception, we will let the agenda stand as presented. So ordered. And we have a proclamation that I'm going to read in support of Constitution Week. This is a proclamation in support of 2022 Constitution Week. preamble to the Constitution of the United States of America begins, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." On September 17, 1787, the Continental Congress approved, and 39 men signed the proposed Constitution for the United States of America, sending it to the states for ratification. This document, once ratified, created the federal government, established its only legitimate powers and the boundaries within which said powers could be exercised. As stated in Article Six, Clause Two of the Constitution, "It is the supreme law of the land, joined only by laws of the United States made pursuant thereof and treaties made within the authority delegated to the United States." As required by Article Six, Clause Three of the Constitution of the United States, all members of the legislatures and all executives and judicial officers of both the United States and the several states are bound by oath or affirmation to support the Constitution of the United States. However, they are not the only ones with a duty to support the Constitution. Federalist paper author and First Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, John Jay, exhorted, and I quote, "Every member of the state ought diligently to read and study the Constitution of his country and teach the rising generation to be free. By knowing their rights, they will sooner perceive when they are violated, and the better be prepared to defend and assert them. It is incumbent upon the people to read and study the Constitution of our country so that we may defend and assert our rights." Now therefore, I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby designate the week beginning September 16 and ending September 22, 2022, as Constitution Week. And I invite the people of the city of Wheat Ridge to observe that week by taking Mr. Jay's advice, to read and study the Constitution of our country, and prepare ourselves to defend and assert our rights against all those who infringe upon them, whether foreign or domestic." Okay. Okay, we will now turn to our public's right to speak. Members of the public may speak on any item not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes during public's right to speak. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name for the record. And then give us your address, and we will, you'll, the clerk will start the timing after you've finished that. And when the yellow light starts to blink, you have 15 seconds left. And when the red light comes on, if you would conclude your remarks. And our first speaker is Lee Recca.
My name is L. Lee Recca, R-E-C-A, and I live in the, at 4475 Brentwood Street. I am here to ask the firearms supply store at 9166 West 44th Avenue not be granted a business license. A gun store at this location presents an unacceptable level of risk to the users of Anderson Park and Pool, which is located just 225 feet away. Rec centers, ball fields, parks, and pools are places where innocent people gather, and this has not escaped the notice of those who would gain notoriety by becoming mass shooters. In fact, less than a week ago, there was a shooting in front of a rec center in Denver, and two males were shot. There are two accessways from the gun store to the pool. One goes in between buildings and through trees and parked cars with plenty of cover and hiding places. The other is a sidewalk leading from the corner to the rec center bordered by a low ornamental split rail fence. A gunman could easily get to the pool and shoot through the open chain link fencing. Anderson Park's south border is the Clear Creek Greenbelt, where a gunman could easily disappear into the woods or flee on foot or by bike. It would be very difficult for police to track down the gunman even if they were on site. Our police force is understaffed and overstretched, as it is, and an officer lost his life in a shooting just near 51st and Sheridan a couple of days ago. There are plenty of places to buy guns already, including Zombio Electronics just a block or two away, and two easy pawn locations within a mile of this proposed site. The primary reason why several other gun shops on 44th have closed is because they were repeatedly broken into with guns stolen for use in criminal activity and on the black market. Another tactic is to steal a car and use it to bash in the door or windows of a gun shop to get at the guns. We don't need this in our quiet, mostly residential neighborhood. Even if none of these scenarios were to happen, the community's sense of security and peace in that neighborhood would be destroyed, and many people would feel like they weren't safe. This might affect attendance at the Carnation Festival, other Anderson Park events, and due to these concerns, I ask that city staff be directed to not issue a business license to firearms supply store, or at least a task force be appointed to investigate this and make a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak at this time. If there's anyone here in City Hall who would like to speak under Citizens' Right to Speak, you may come up and do so now. And I'll ask our clerk, if you are online and would like to speak, you may raise your hand in the virtual format, and we will bring you into the meeting. And I'll give it a minute or so, or see if anyone has raised their hands. Okay, then we will close our Citizens' Right to Speak and move to our first agenda item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we continue with the agenda, could we make a quick introduction of a new staffer?
I'm sorry, yes, I was gonna do that, and it passed my mind. Please proceed, Mr. Goff.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I would love to introduce to you all in our public, our new Public Works Director. I know some of you have met her at the mayor's reception for the Carnation Festival a few weeks ago. But Maria DeAndrea is in the audience. I'm just gonna say a few words. But Maria comes with great amount of experience in city government, in public works, and most recently from the city of Inglewood. She lives in our neighborhood, so happy to have her on board. This is the start of her second week, and unfortunately, starting during a very difficult couple of weeks here at the city. But she's taken it in stride and been very patient, so Maria?
Thank you, Patrick. Yes, good evening. I'd like to introduce myself and just say I'm so excited to be here at the city of Wheat Ridge and lead the Public Works Department. As Patrick said, I've been in local government most of my career. Started in Minnesota, which is where I'm from originally, and have served three different communities out here with, within the Denver metro area. So again, just so excited to be here. It is a very unique time to come on board, but I'm really excited about serving the citizens, serving City Council, and moving forward with a lot of initiatives that we have in our plate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Wheat Ridge. We look forward to having you here. Okay, thank you for that interruption and that introduction. So with that, we will go to Agenda Item Number One and go to Counselor Ohm for an introduction on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 17-2022, an ordinance amending Section 21-30 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning performance warranty and guarantee for work in public rights away. At issue, Chapter 21 of the Code of Laws entitled Streets and Sidewalks regulates all construction and operation in public rights away. This chapter was comprehensively revised in 2020. This ordinance amends the required warranty period for public improvements from three years to two years. This is sufficient for the city's needs and is consistent with the requirements of many other Denver-area cities.
Thank you very much. This is going to be a public hearing. It is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Our city attorney has a few words to add. Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. You've seen this, of course, on first reading. It's a pretty simple ordinance, and we have come to the conclusion that a standard term of two years for this particular warranty, performance warranty and guarantee on public facilities built by private individuals in the course of doing a project is sufficient. We've found that our experience has been that it's been sufficient in the past. Other cities use that term, and it's useful, especially for contractors in contracting, to have a standard timeframe that they will need to go out and get performance warranties for. It's a cost. And if the city of Wheat Ridge's requirement is different than other cities, it just makes it a little more difficult to do business here. And we're able to make this change and recommend it without any injury to the interests of the city.
Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I will invite the public to speak on this Agenda Item Number One. If you would like to speak, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. And if you would like to speak and are online, raise your hand in the virtual format. Okay, I see no one, no hands raised. We'll close that portion. And are there questions of council of staff on this item before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Counselor Ohm, you have a motion on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to recommend Council Bill Number 17-2022, an ordinance amending Section 21-30 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning performance warranty and guarantee for work in public rights away on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Two. Mayor Pro Tim Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to accept the 2021 financial statements from Clifton Larson Allen, or Clifton Larson Allen, as it's written. At issue, Section 1015 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge requires that an independent audit be performed annually for all city accounts. In 2021, the city received more than $750,000 in federal funds for Wadsworth Boulevard, which also triggered a single audit of all federal funds. The CPA firm Clifton Larson Allen, CLA, performed both the city and federal audits of the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2021. Once again this year, the city received an unqualified opinion indicating that the city's financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented. A representative from CLA will be at the September 12, 2022 City Council meeting to present the 2021 financial statements to council for acceptance.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do, and our CLA is also here to give a presentation, I believe. But I'll turn it over to Ally Shack, our Administrative Services Director, to introduce the item. But also, I'd like to thank our staff. Mark Colvin's here, our finance manager. I'm sure Ally will mention, will speak of his work, but would like to thank Mark personally. This is a, it's a very large effort to get the annual audit done. And it's always a great thing, obviously, to have a clean audit, and we are always very successful with that, and that shows the hard work that our finance staff does on a daily basis. So, Ally?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Goff. And again, my thanks also to Mark Colvin and his team who worked so hard on this. But it's my great pleasure to introduce my favorite name to say into a microphone, Jean-Paul Lechevalier, with Clifton Larson Allen, or as we refer to them as CLA. Jean-Paul will walk you through his findings from our 2021 financial statements. And then both Jean-Paul and then Mark Colvin, our finance manager, are here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Sure, so I'll spend, and you should have received a copy of the financial statements, both in electronic and in a hard copy format. Again, my name is Jean-Paul Lechevalier, and I'm gonna, you know, it's an almost 70-page document, so we'll cover just a couple of the numbers in there and a few highlights. But if there is anything that's of greater interest, or something that anyone from the council would like to highlight or discuss, please feel free to interrupt at any point, and we can discuss that a little bit further. So beginning on page one, you'll see, as kind of was mentioned in the introduction, that the city did receive an unmodified or informally referred to as a clean audit opinion. And so that indicates that after all of our audit procedures, that we believe with reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. And so that's the highest level of audit opinion that you can receive, and it's also the level of audit opinion that you should expect to receive. If you weren't going to receive that, this would not be the first time you'd be hearing about it. It would be a much bigger deal than, you know, it wouldn't be just coming up now. So if you are familiar with audited financial statements or audit opinions, you will notice that the audit report looks just a little bit different this year. There was a nationwide change from the AICPA, so they changed the standard audit language. That didn't change any of the audit procedures that we performed. It doesn't change the level of assurance or anything relating to the audit, other than it just looks a little bit different. Mainly, they moved the opinion paragraph that says we give an unmodified opinion to the very front of the report, because that's what people cared about. So you'll notice that that's a little bit, the format's a little bit different, but otherwise, it's pretty much the same. If you move to page 16 of the financial statements, you'll see that the city does present, as do almost all governments within the United States, presents two sets of financial statements. The first set is going to be a long-term view of the financial position of the city, and then the second set, which begins two pages later, is going to be your short-term, or really kind of more focused on a budget-level view of the city's financial statements. So you see in both situations, so the first one, the long-term view, the big difference there is that your capital assets, so your buildings, vehicles, things of that nature are included. In the second set, they're not. The first set of financial statements, the financial position increased by about 29 and a half million, so a strengthening of your long-term financial position. And then on your short-term financial position, that did increase by about 14 and a half million. So in both the short-term and long-term view for 2021, the city strengthened its financial position compared to the previous year. A big part of that would be the additional federal funding that was received under the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as some of the cash that was received relating to the Clear Creek project. So after that point, again, trying to go pretty quickly, again, if there's anything that you want to cover in more detail, please feel free to interrupt. After that point, there is the footnote disclosures, which is a whole number of pages that basically any number within the financial statements has some type of description of the accounting policies or additional information relating to that amount. Some items that may be of interest on page 27, you can see the different types of investments that the city holds. On page 30 is going to be your change in capital assets, so any investment in building improvements, vehicles, things of those, that nature would be included there. And then your change in long-term liabilities, including the issuance of debt by the Urban Renewal Authority, would be beginning on page 31. So most of the time, those are of a little bit more interest, though again, nothing overly important, I believe, to share there. Towards the end of the financial statements, you'll see a budgetary comparison schedule, which compares the original and final budget to the actual results. The one thing to note there is that in every, and that's by fund, which is the same level that the city budgets at, within each one, the actual expenditures of the city were less than the budgeted expenditures, which is required by Colorado statute. So that budgetary schedule would show that each fund is in compliance with that requirement. So at the very end of the financial statements, you'll see another section on compliance, and this relates to the federal single audit, which is one audit over all of the federal awards received by the city. The two significant projects would be the amount passed through from CDOT for the Wadsworth Improvement Project, as well as the federal funds received under the Corona, for COVID relief under the American Rescue Plan, the state and local fiscal recovery funds. So this year, there's a guideline that the federal government puts out on all of the different requirements and things that were required to review as part of that single audit, and we're pleased to note that there were no findings or exceptions noted relating to that. So this year, this year's focus was on the COVID relief funding under the American Rescue Plan Act that did allow for a $10 million, which is greater than the amount received by the city, to be spent on any quote-unquote "lost" revenue, so it could be basically used on any government service. So the federal requirements specific to the city of Wheat Ridge were relatively lenient, or that, you know, there weren't as many requirements as typically comes with a lot of federal awards. Also included with the financial statements was a letter that's addressed to City Council. This, we refer to as our governance communication, and this would include, if there is anything important that needed to be said as part of the audit, it would be included within this letter, and that would include any significant findings, any audit adjustments, corrections that were made. And we're pleased to report that we did not have any audit adjustments, corrections, or any significant findings. So we did have a couple of recommendations that we had discussed with the city, none of those reaching the level of importance or significance to bring to City Council. The last thing that I wanted to mention was just that there are changes coming in governmental accounting standards, beginning this next year, specific to leases, which will require some additional analysis by the finance department and potentially result in some changes to the financial statements. That's taking some leases that would otherwise just be shown as payments as incurred, and showing them as long-term liabilities similar to debt or bonds. So the presentation would potentially change. So that's something that we will be working with your finance department on evaluating and changing for the presentation. And then the subsequent year, it's a similar thing, but for IT software contracts. So something coming over the next two years that may have some impact. At this point, don't believe it will be overly significant, but just wanted to mention that those changes were coming. Any questions, comments?
I tell you what, before we go to questions from council, I'd like to have you just hold on, and we'll see if there's any, any comments from the, from the public. So if there's anyone, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item, but if you are here and would like to speak, you may do so. Or if you are online and would like to speak, you may raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting.
No one, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't see anyone doing either of that, so now we'll go to questions from council. Doesn't look like we have a lot of questions.
That sounds good. Again, I appreciate the city's finance department for all of their help. It really is a pretty big undertaking, takes a lot of hours, both on their part and our part, to get through everything that we need to for the audit. So really appreciate all of their hard work and assistance with all of our questions and requests.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for producing us a good, clean audit. We, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Glad to have it, glad to have it there. And thank you to Mark Colvin and your, and your department, and Ally Shack for, for putting this all together, because this is great. So if there's nothing else, then I will ask Mayor Pro Tim Hulteen for a motion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to accept the 2021 financial statements from Clifton Larson Allen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will a clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the vote is six in favor, one against, with Ms. Hulteen voting nay. Would you like to reconsider your vote? Have you? That's, that's a common thing in teenage women.
Please mark me as a, as a yes vote.
We will record that as a unanimous approval, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification, Mayor Pro Tim Hulteen. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Three. Counselor Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion approving payment of $85,553 to Long Building Technologies for the provisions and installation of domestic water heater for the city of Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. At issue, the domestic water heater currently serving the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center has surpassed its expected useful life of 13 years. The original budgeted amount of $42,000 is not enough to cover the cost of replacement. However, funds exist- However, funds exist in the budget that can cover the additional expense.
Thank you very much. This will be a motion by the council that is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't. Nothing really to add to this, other than the fact that our rec center is aging. It's 23 years old, and, and things are needing to be replaced. And you'll see in our budget presentation for next year that we have a long list of other things that we're asking for replacement for next year, but this is one. We can't wait, so I think that's all we've got.
All right. We will invite the public to speak on this item. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak, you may do so now. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and would, in the hall and would like to speak, you may do so, or you may raise your hand online, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I'll ask our clerk if anyone's raised their hand, and no one, no one stepping forward to speak on this one, so we will go to questions from council. Mr. Counselor Stites?
Just a quick question, maybe long-term planning. As we kind of look at maybe doing a tax increase or continuing our, our half-cent sales tax, is the rec center something that we want to look at as far as either additional maintenance or adding on to, that sort of thing?
You know, I'll let Karen add to that if she would like, but there has, that, the rec center expansion has been kind of talked about over the years, has a potential expense in the future, and I, I think it's something that I think we should consider. There, and there are some long-term maintenance requirements too, which we are thankfully covering with some of the additional bonding that we're doing and different, additional revenues that we're receiving. So we're hoping to catch up on the maintenance, but as I mentioned, the building is, is getting older, so I think we've done a great job of keeping it pretty state-of-the-art. And if you've been in there recently, they're, we're kind of doing a refresh to, to make it a little more, look, look a little more modern, but yes, I think maybe we should look at it in some aspect, either expansion or maybe just some long-term maintenance issues.
Thank you. Any additional?
I think I would just add that we're also looking to the facility condition assessment to help inform particularly some of the issues that we're having with aquatics, both at the recreation center and at the Anderson Pool. So that could help inform what additional projects might need to take place. But I do believe, and Patrick would know better than I would, but before my time here, I believe it was Barker Rinker SeaCat Architecture that did some work on potential expansion options for the future. So I know that there's some documentation that exists. We'd certainly want to revisit and kind of start over, but I think that's a good starting point.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. May I have a motion, Counselor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the motion approving payment of $85,553 to Long Building Technologies for the provision and installation of domestic water heater for the city of Wheat Ridge Recreation Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there, no, oh, I'm sorry. My hearing is not so good. Thank you very much. Counselor Hutchinson, is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Okeydoke. Thank you so much. That completes our agenda items. We will now go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to be back. And I do have a couple, just quick items this evening, a couple of updates. First of all, staff has taken away my passport, so I can no longer leave the country. Seems like every time I do, something major happens. But saying that, I would like to, to start with, you know, you, you always build a, a great team around you, right? It's never about yourself, and we've been so successful, I think, in the city because of the team we built, so I was very happy to know we had a great team without me here and, and keeping things moving, and not just Ally, but our whole IT staff and, and our whole management team. Everybody really comes together when we, when we come across these issues. And unfortunately, we, we've come across another fairly significant issue here at the city, and also I'd like to thank Mr. Dahl. He's been very well involved, and I know you've all spoken to him in the last week or so, giving, giving you some details about this. But as you're aware, we, we had a system outage here just in the last couple of weeks. On Monday, August 29th, all of our IT professionals from the city began proactively shutting down aspects of our city's server after a cybersecurity incident was identified, rendering City Hall and many city services email and phones unavailable. Currently, IT, our IT professionals are working to restore operations safely, which is the most important thing, and have made great progress since last week. A few items, a few updates. I know Ally's been providing you updates through email, through personal email, since our city emails aren't working, or not up and running yet. But we did open, reopen City Hall for business on Tuesday, September 6th, although some court and police department services were being offered starting August 30th. We're hoping to restore city email this week, working on that diligently. City employees have had their devices, their, their laptops like this scanned for threats, and were updated with enhanced security. We've had 85 of our computers scanned Friday, just the last Friday alone. We're asking that council leave their, their computers with us this evening so that we can scan your laptops this week. Our phones across all departments have been restored. We're adding new security software, has been implemented on our city's website. Our police department is fully operational with its non-emergency line restored. However, there still is some limited access to records. Our court services are fully operational, accepting all payment forms. The virtual connection to our Jefferson County jail system has been restored. Recreation Center continues to operate according to normal schedules, and phones are restored. We're hoping this week to bring back our recreation registration software, which is still down, and allow credit card payments. We're only allowing cash payments today still. Public Works Team continues to operate normally, and last week, as we mentioned, we welcomed our new director, Maria. Can't communicate very well with her, but she's here. Online reporting and payments are available for sales tax and licensing. Drop-off tax and license transactions are being accepted. Public record requests can now be made online using a new form system. The city's homepage of our website currently has an alert sharing information on these limited services to the, to our public, and different ways to access our departments. So you can find that on the, on the website. I think as you all know, as you were briefed by our city attorney, we do have an investigation team on board. They've determined that the server shutdown was in response to a ransomware incident, which unfortunately is happening more and more across the country, and we're seeing increases across the world, actually. It's important to know that this investigation of the impact on personal and employee information is ongoing. As we learn more, the city's prepared to make appropriate and, appropriate contact with affected individuals that may be impacted by any, any information, release of personal information. We're trying to be as transparent as possible throughout this event without jeopardizing the ongoing investigation. We're still in the middle of that investigation, but we are trying to communicate as, as much as we can to make sure you all know and our community knows what's going on. So our priorities moving forward, our first is to make sure that we have a clean and safe environment that is free of any latent threats from cyber attacks. We're adding additional security measurements to what we've had in place for many years, new security to our website. We're implementing a new two-step verification on all employee devices, implementation of a security device that reports and monitors any suspicious activity. These initiatives are ongoing. And, you know, I think that's kind of the update for today. We're grateful for council's patience and understanding and support during this process, but I think we're getting there. We hope to be fully restored, hopefully in the, in the next week or two, and back to full operation. So again, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work. They've been working 24/7 for the last couple of weeks to make sure that we're up and operating as much as possible. And again, the biggest priority is to make sure that we have a safe and clean environment to come back to. And unfortunately, these ransomware incidents are changing daily and becoming more and more sophisticated, and, and you have to make sure that we're on top of it, top of it daily, so. And with that, I'll move on to second update real quick. As you all know, unfortunately, another tragic event in our community, Arvada Police Officer Dylan Backoff was, was killed in, on-duty accidents last week. Our police department, as always, Jim, is still here, is providing support in these, these incidents, and we are responding to calls for service in certain parts of Arvada today and potentially tomorrow. But our thoughts go out to Arvada and the family of Officer Dylan Backoff, and just remember our officers here at the city. I was talking to a few of them today, and who've worked in many other organizations, and they, they feel that Wheat Ridge provides some of the best training for officers, so hopefully this will never happen in our community, but it's, it's, it's always a sad day when you, when you, when these things happen. So with that, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you for the work you've been doing lately.
Of course.
So we'll go to elected officials' matters, and let us begin today with our clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick.
We have received a submission of the cure period petition from those who are seeking to refer Ordinance 1744 on ADUs to the voters. We will have more specifics to give you once we have completed the review of the signatures, which I anticipate will be soon, because the deadline to declare either sufficient or insufficient is this Friday. So we are working diligently to meet that deadline, and of course, when we're finished, we will inform the right people at the right time.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll go to our city councilors, and let us begin with Counselor Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick moment and thank all of the staff for everything that they've done over the past, I don't know, 10,000 years, I think is really what it's, it's been, but it's just been such a, a challenge. But once again, like, our staff just rise to the occasion, and I specifically do just want to call out Ally Scheck for all of your incredible work and just being such a voice of reason when things felt so out of control, and you got an award for it this year, but I don't know, we're going to have to get you like the platinum, the platinum award. But thank you for all that you do for us. And I also wanted to just mention that the community, since the last time we met, actually the day after we met, news broke that the school district is planning to close three of the schools that serve the Wheat Ridge community, Vivian Color Strand and Wilmore Davis. And there has been a lot of communications going on about what this means for our community. I have two kids that attend Wilmore Davis, and also Councilmember Cory Stites has kids who attend Color Strand. We're really engaged with talking to the administration at the schools, also interacting with the school district and with families and parents. If anybody is interested in, in learning more, how they can get involved, please reach out to myself or to Counselor Stites, and also touch base with your school's PTA to see what they're doing. I also have yard signs available if anyone is interested that say, "Save our communities, save our schools," please reach out to me, and I can get you one of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say thank you very much to Ally and her leadership, getting things together. I never could have done that. I also want to state that I want to give my sincere sympathy to the family of the young officer that was killed, and also to the Arvada Police Department. It's devastating, and it's very upsetting that we live in a culture like this. Very upsetting to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd first like to start with sending my condolences to the Arvada Police Department, the Arvada community, and the family and loved ones of Officer Dylan Backoff. It is such a tragedy, and the aftermath of what happened in his death in the line of duty was also really disappointing to hear about and scary within the community. So thank you to our officers for always responding and, and for the community for rallying around this incident and, and supporting and really showing up for not only Arvada, but the surrounding communities. I also wanted to commend staff for all of their hard work. The leadership has really shown through, and teamwork does make the dream work, and you guys have done a phenomenal job at communicating and updating us on this incident, and then also doing what needed to be done to mitigate it as much as possible. On a little bit lighter news, we did have the grand reopening of Caesar Square, which Wheat Ridge gave $3.5 million of private activity bonds to. Councilmember Cory Stites and I were able to attend the ribbon cutting for that, and the, and also tour the renovations and see all the hard work that's gone in. And so that's a wonderful project in our community that is supporting affordable housing, and we're really lucky to have it and have that partnership with Foothills Regional Housing and many other organizations in the region. So thank you for that, and kudos to staff all the way around.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo all three of the councilors before me and just say that our condolences are with Arvada, and our, our gratitude is with our staff. You guys have done a phenomenal job the last couple of weeks trying to make sure that everything keeps running. I have two big things tonight, along with what Councilmember Nosler Beck said. Last Tuesday at the Jeffco Board Meeting, I was able to watch, the staff called out Wheat Ridge specifically, saying that we're a repeat offender, not getting them their, our numbers for development. And I know that goes either through our community development department, or when I pressed the staff on it Thursday night at Color Strand, they said specifically the city manager's department. So, and the numbers they're using currently are all Lakewood numbers that feed into Stover, and they don't, other than saying that the, whoever the staff member was literally drives by Clear Creek and knows something's going on, he, they're using all Lakewood numbers, and they have no Wheat Ridge Development numbers. So if we can get them numbers for Clear Creek Crossing and every other thing that's going on, I, I off of memory listed them on a Facebook post yesterday, but there's a lot going on, and they're not taking into any account.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, all, they're, they're referred on every development in the city, so.
Okay.
That's, that's untrue, but we'll follow up with them.
I didn't think it would be, because our, our staff is pretty on top of it, so I was, I was disappointed, and I was, I was, a lot of things that, just to be honest, that Jeffco Public Schools has done in the last two weeks has really disappointed me, but, and specifically, they, they had called us out on that, in that meeting. So if we can, again, maybe forward them everything at nauseam until they get it, that would be fantastic, because they are not using correct information, and it's going to cost us quite a bit here. Along with that, is, along with Councilwoman Nosler Beck, if you are interested in signs or information about what's going on, please contact us, because we have, we've got a massive hill to climb, and we would like to get the community involved in that, because losing three schools is, is not good for our community, and all the effort that we've put in the last few years to bring in young families and, and strong households. So that's definitely something we're looking at. On a better note, Councilwoman Weaver and I have a meeting on Saturday for District Meeting, or for District Three. We're pretty excited about this one. Postcards went out a few months ago for it. This is going to be, starting at 9:00 AM, we will be at Louise Turner Park. We will have dumpsters and hopefully some staff there helping us load the dumpster. Okay, thank you. Mr. Goff has given me the thumbs up on that. So we will be there starting at 9:00 AM, probably a little bit before that. We'll be loading dumpsters probably throughout the morning, but we will start our district meeting at 10, 10:00 AM, and that should go till roughly 11:00 or until people are done talking. We'll cover a couple of- We'll cover a couple of items that we want to talk about, and we're open to anything that District Three wants to talk about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start first, but I just, I want to thank Ally and that staff. Did an amazing job of just, I can't imagine the amount of stress and pressure to try to move forward. Thank you for that, and just keep moving forward. I really appreciate it. It's been a while, so I got a couple of things on my list here. I had a neighborhood block party a few weeks ago, and I had some discussions with several constituents, you know, worrying about the school and just trying to, you know, trying to see what we can do to help them out. And I've also had some discussions at some other events. We had a Jeffco Quarterly Breakfast, talking to the superintendent and president of the school board. I understand the concern. You know, the Wilmore Davis School is like two blocks from my house, and that's where I took my kids to that school, so it's very near and dear to my heart. And then I was able to go to an award ceremony for Congressman Perlmutter, who's done some amazing service for Colorado. And there was also two women that had some really amazing stories of how they were able to get out of generational poverty through a program, Head Start. And it was pretty moving. I don't think there's any dry eyes in the room, but it was just amazing how these two women really propelled, you know, themselves forward with the help of the community. And they mentioned Wheat Ridge, one of them did a couple of times. And then I went to CML District Meeting, and I was chatting with one of the mayors, and she mentioned that she had a friend that they just moved to Wheat Ridge not too long ago, and they said they loved Wheat Ridge. And I thought, you know, that's really nice, that you're hearing this from somebody else, another mayor in a different city, of how they feel about our city. The last thing I want is I got this, got a little card in the mail, handwritten from one of my constituents, and on the front it says, "Some jobs come with us, some perks. Working with someone like you is one of them." And she wrote, "I am very grateful to you and Commander Hunt for your immediate help and attention in this matter." It had to do with a lot of trash kind of behind Wendy's, and so I just really want to say thank you to the police department. And I'm going to pass this card on to D.C. Lorenz, and please pass out Commander Hunt. You know, that, you know, I don't know how many times we all get a handwritten card from somebody, but I was like, wow, that, you know, she went way out of her way. It's a lot of handwriting, and I need to meet her in person. She's just a few blocks from my house, but really thank you to the police department.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mayor. Air guitar for Ally. Thank you to all the staff for all the things you've been doing, and my condolences, of course, go to our VADA. Just to repeat about our District Three meeting, it's going to be a lot of fun with dumpsters. Louise Turner Park, 9:00 a.m. Saturday. But if you're from other districts, you can't come, sorry. This is just dumpsters for District Three. I was able to attend some fun things over the last two weeks, and I just wanted to mention that several other councilors and the mayor was there at the topping ceremony for the new hospital in Clear Creek Crossing. That was very exciting. And then the mayor and I went to ribbon cutting at the Edward Jones Office on Wadsworth and 44th.
First Bank Building?
Yeah. And that was a lot of fun. And yesterday, it was the 50th anniversary of Happiness Gardens. And so that is a pretty cool thing, that we've had an interesting, interesting historical story. The Historical Society was there to tell the background of the gardens, and all the leadership from Park and Rec was there, and the Cultural Commission was there. It was just a neat celebration at Happiness. So happy birthday, happiness. It was a birthday party at the gardens. So those are three really fun things that have been happening, and I just wanted to give a shout out to all of those great things that have been happening around Wheat Ridge. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Mayor Protem Holtein?
Thank you. I realize we've been not in the room together for a while, so we all have lengthy lists. But I can't not acknowledge the tremendous efforts of staff, not just efforts, but skills and capacity and dedication. This is the kind of thing that, you know, you may think you're ready for, but it comes, and then you find out if you are. And we found out that we couldn't have handled it better. So I'm just really proud of Team Wheat Ridge. And I think one of the things that, you know, the warm-up pandemic exercise helped us with was that we're, you know, we're a very deep team, and we aren't really dependent on one person shining brightly. Everyone shines brightly. And, you know, one of our brightest stars wasn't even here for it. So anyway, just, and Ally in particular, you are fantastic, and you make everyone else feel calm, and thank you for that skill.
Ally said this is worse than the pandemic, though, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Tells you the level of stress we're under.
Yeah, well, the pandemic was a long, sloggy, constantly. Yeah, so anyway, I just thank you for all the work you've done and the gray hairs you've burned in the last couple of weeks. Then I sadly wasn't able to attend the Happiness Gardens party. That would have been the party I would have liked to have gone to, but we had our block party yesterday, and it's just such a deep reminder of why Wheat Ridge is a great place to live. We had neighbors who have lived here since before Happiness Gardens was a thing, and we had some neighbors that had lived in the neighborhood a week show up. And then I saw them this morning when I was biking to work. And so, you know, it's our corners and our neighborhoods which make Wheat Ridge a really fantastic place to call home, and I'm just grateful for all the neighbors who show up. Okay, let's see here, what else? Speaking of staff, I am just incredibly impressed with the staff that we continue to attract and hire great talent that's in this room right now. Maria, welcome. Really looking forward to working with you. I had the opportunity to catch up with Amanda, our new communications guru, and she could not be better aligned and qualified, and her just personal passions align with sort of our culture as a city. So we're getting talent, but we're also getting people, I think, to understand who we are so they can represent us well. And so good work to us for doing that. And I'm looking forward to being back online so that the rest of the community can get to know these great new ladies as well. And two more quick things. We have, District Three is not the only district in the dumps. We have Local Works Dumpster Days is in District Two this Saturday in my neighborhood at 44th and Brentwood at the church there. And so we encourage anyone who's got the lingering stuff they need to upload, there'll be dumpsters there, and you'll see me there with several loads of things. And then the other thing, we hosted Deep Dive Club last Wednesday. This is our monthly, "From Great, Patios Come Great Policies" gathering. Cory Stites was there, and Ms. Freckle, who spoke tonight, was there. And it's just a great opportunity to actually have challenging conversations about some of the big policy topics we're tackling. This one, we talked about housing, and we played kind of a fun game where we just tried to build four houses, four affordable houses, and it was incredibly difficult to come to an agreement on a policy or a project that made sense to everybody enough to spend their monopoly money. And so it's just a reminder that when we're up here and we're having these conversations as a community, we are solving very complex problems with imperfect solutions, and the only way we get there is by showing up and having the conversations with our whole diversity of stakeholders. And I just want to thank our city for doing a good job of its community engagement platforms and efforts, because that makes sure that when we do set those policies, we're doing the best we can. And again, they're always imperfect, but we're doing a good job of getting people to the table. So that's my rambling, really long update. Mayor, on to you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will add my voice of appreciation and thanks to our city staff. Everybody really sort of came together, and that's what you do when you have a great team and you work together and solve problems together. And I think we do it from the top of our organization down to the real foot soldiers that make it happen, and I appreciate that, and I know our citizens do. So thank you very much. I want to express my condolences to the officer's family who was taken down in our VADA just the other day. And I want to really say a special thank you to all of the public service and police officers who work diligently in very dangerous times to keep us safe. We had one of our own officers severely injured not long ago, and I certainly hope he's recovering and doing well. And I want to thank all of the public safety officials and officers that keep us safe. So thank you so much. A lot of great things going on in our city. You've heard of a lot of them. We've had ribbon cuttings, Edward Jones Office. We had the Foothills Credit Union come online with a great ribbon cutting and a great business over there. I want to welcome Maria DeAndrea to our city. We've got a great public works department, and I know that you'll do great wonders with them. So thank you very much for your work with us. We had the topping off ceremony at SCL Health. Really excited in the 24 months to have that new medical facility coming online, just really kind of gets you excited, and then the Lutheran Legacy Campus coming thereafter. So a lot of great things and a long runway in our city for great strides and things coming in the future. Let's see, thanks all the folks who joined me on Saturday morning for coffee with the mayor. We had some great discussion. All of a sudden, the hour was gone, and I still had a lot of stuff I wanted to cover. So thank you all for joining us. As you travel around our city, our children are out playing. The evenings and afternoons are great to be outside, so really slow down, watch for all the folks in our community, and let's work together to build a great city and keep everybody safe. We will be back here next week in study session. So with no further business to come before us tonight, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.